November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. It is now six P M. The council chambers will be open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live stream meeting on the city's website at Members of the public may comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. Enter I D eight forty-four, four, six, three, one, nine, zero, five, seven, eight. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at two oh five West Fourth Street, Madera, California, nine, three, six, three, seven. The city will observe the Madera County Public Health Department physical distancing recommendations. This may limit seating in the council chamber. However, the city will have seating available in the foyer. All persons visiting city facilities shall observe health and safety precautions. Alicia, would you please call the role?
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Villas.
Here.
Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montez is absent this evening and Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Thank you very much, Alicia. Would you all please stand for the invocation led by Pastor Sammy Neely from Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we once again approach you, Father, in the name of Jesus. Father, we come today in this time of turmoil and this changing of seasons, and we come first to give thanks. Thank you for allowing us to be out together. Thank you for our health and our strength. We ask that you bless this meeting, that we, Father, that we not get in any conflict. We ask for peace and unity. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by City Clerk Alicia Gonzalez? Thank you, Mr. Neely, and thank you, Alicia. I now move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions, my colleague? Being done, I'll see a motion. Motion to approve the agenda by Councilwoman Anita Evans, second by Councilmember Artemio Villas. Alicia, would you call the role?
Councilmember Gallegos.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Montez is absent. Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villas.
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I will now take a moment of privilege to wish our Councilmember Montez a speedy recovery. I understand that he's sick today, so we'll keep him in our prayers.
Amen.
We now move on to public comment. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold a comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusion shall be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time. Alicia, do we have any public comments?
Mayor, I have no written public. I'm sorry, I have no written public comment. Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak?
Absolutely, sir. Absolutely.
Mark, do we have any callers on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom.
Thank you very much, Alicia. There are no written communications presentations. I believe that we have Sarah Boss from the Department of Public Health, an update on COVID-nineteen report from the Madera County Public Health Department. Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Good to be with you. Our case rate is at twenty-seven point six per hundred thousand and our positivity rate at seven point six percent. Our testing rate is still high. And we are gearing up for a surge that we are expecting in the winter, and there's a couple of reasons why we anticipate a surge. The first is what's called our R effective is above one, and what that means is is that at one the case rate would stay exactly the same. If it's below one, then we're expecting it to go down. Right now, it's above one. We've been staying pretty steady, but we do anticipate also an increase for a whole host of reasons as we move into the holidays. And it'll be pretty familiar to you based on the surge that we experienced last winter. You know, there is, it's looking like there's a seasonality to COVID, similar to our flu that we see each year and colds that they go up in the winter. We also have Delta this year, which is different than we had in a year before. Last year, we had, we didn't have vaccines, but we also didn't have Delta. There's crowded stores this year in ways that we didn't see last year because of where we were at with guidance. And of course, holiday gathering, low masking, and a significant thing is waning immunity, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. So we are gearing up towards that, and our hospitalizations continue to go up. Last year, our hospitalizations about this time were less than they are right now. So it is a big concern, and we do really encourage people to to take action to reduce our case count and keep the surge under control. We had seven additional people, unfortunately, that passed away due to COVID-nineteen among Madera County residents this last week. Only one was vaccinated, and that individual was in their seventies and had underlying health conditions. Vaccination, as you know, is super important, and in Madera County, I just want to let you know that all of the percentages have shifted for two reasons. First, our eligible population grew, and all of our percentages around vaccination were based on eligible population. We've added age five to eleven as eligible, so that shifted things, but also we've updated to the new census data. And so that changed things as well as population did grow some. Overall, for the county, fully vaccinated, forty-nine point four percent, at least one dose at fifty-five point six. Area A is the same as the county average, but Area C is a little bit higher for one dose at sixty point eight percent. We are seeing more vaccination happening right now, and that's great. In fact, a thousand new vaccinations this last week. And also just under four hundred vaccinations of our five to eleven-year-old population. Our vaccination clinics will be closed for Thanksgiving from the twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh and resuming on our regular schedule following Tuesday, the thirtieth. Treatment is something that's increasing as well. We're gearing up and expanding our ability to provide monoclonal antibody treatment, which I mentioned last time. It is free of cost to anyone regardless of whether or not they have insurance or what insurance they have. It does, it is for people who are seniors as well as individuals with underlying health conditions, and it needs to be administered early in order for it to be effective. It's really important for people to test early, but also we're looking forward to antivirals. You may have heard about these in the news. They're not an infusion like monoclonal antibodies or an IV. Instead, it's a pill, which will be a lot more convenient and easier to administer. And we're looking forward to how those are going to be distributed in California. We don't have details there in planning phases right now, but I'll give you an update next time about that. So key takeaways, we do expect a surge due to all the reasons I mentioned earlier. Research is showing that immunity wanes significantly, especially for age sixty-five and up at six months post-vaccination and post-infection. So they're looking at both of those groups, whether you've gotten immunity from a vaccine or you had COVID in the past. Both groups have waning immunity, and it's significant by the time it gets to six months. So boosters are really important. So if you had COVID in the past and you're not vaccinated, even one shot could be really helpful for you. And if you haven't gotten a booster and you are vaccinated, you can get those if you're at least eighteen years old and you're six months after you've received a vaccine. That's if it's Moderna or Pfizer. If you've got Johnson and Johnson, if it's just two months later, you can get a booster. We encourage people to consider the impacts to their work and to their family if they get COVID. Even if you're not hospitalized, it does mean a significant time in which you're not able to work and you need to isolate from others. So it has a big impact on a lot of things and really encourage you to act early to prevent COVID instead of having to deal with those ramifications. So please don't wait to test. Early detection is key for treatment. So if you have any symptoms, it's better to just test and know. And then we can also, at Public Health, really help you in reducing your close contacts. One other thing I'll just mention that's not COVID-related, but I'll sneak this in, is we do have our community health assessment survey, which is out, and it's closing in just two days. And that's the opportunity for anyone in the county to provide feedback about what's important to them. And it really sets the stage for not just Public Health, but many of our partners around initiatives that we will do for the next three years. So if you want to have input, the survey takes about twenty to thirty minutes, and I'll put that in the chat, and it'd be great if the city could share that out with others as well.
Thank you, Sarah. As always, very informative, a lot of good information. I will let you know that my family is fully vaccinated. Both my wife and I have gotten our boosters. Our grandchildren have gotten their shots. My grand, my my oldest children have also got their shots and the flu, the flu shot also. So we should be good to go, and I told everyone, hey, Sarah says, let's get this done. So, you know, we're complying with your requests because we want our friends and family to be well. Any comments from my comments?
I just want to thank Sarah, and I did take the survey, and it does take some of your time, so be prepared.
Great. I can't put it in the chat, but I'll send it on to Arnaldo.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you very much for coming with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we will now move on to a couple of fun things. I could have Mr. Holly come up to the podium.
I ain't changed.
Oh, yeah, he's still the same guy. Councilmember, this is from the Office of the Mayor representing the City Council. It is quite lengthy, so I won't read the whole thing, but I will say that this is a proclamation for the Second Missionary Baptist Church one-hundredth anniversary. Whereas the Second Missionary Baptist Church located in Madera, California, was organized in November twenty-third, nineteen twenty-one. And whereas the church will be celebrating its one-hundredth anniversary on November twenty-first, two thousand and one. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Santos Garcia, Mayor of the City of Madera, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim November twenty-first, two thousand and one as a day in celebration of the one-hundredth anniversary of the Second Missionary Baptist Church and further acknowledge their commitment to the faith community of Madera, signed this day, the seventeenth of November, two thousand and twenty-one.
Believe me, I'm not used to talking into mics. Yeah, right. First of all, I'd just like to thank the city for this proclamation. It is an honor to be at a location in Madera for a hundred years and still going strong, you know. Right now, just to give you all a little bad news, so you won't have to hear it in the streets like most people do. We are in looking for a pastor. Our pastor got sick on us, and he had to step down. But God has sent somebody, so y'all keep us in prayer. And my last thing that I got up to say is that everybody needs to get vaccinated. I am losing so many family members, so many friends behind COVID. And it is a sad situation when you can't visit your loved ones to see them leave this world. And hospitals won't let you in. If you do, you can only bring one. And that's a long process, so this COVID is serious. Last but not least, I want y'all to know that I'm coming back after my seat. I didn't say when. No, I think you guys are doing a wonderful job. I really appreciate being a part of this over the last twenty-something odd years of working with the city as well as council. So I'm just a phone call away. I'm not a stranger. I might pop up on you anytime and some good news and some with bad. But we need to pray for our community. I think that's more needed than anything right now, that whatever we may do, we can come together. And whatever you do, leave in prayer. You know, sometimes people say, well, I don't need to pray. Well, yeah, we do. We've got so much going on right now. You can pray by yourself. Right now, we're searching for a pastor, and I told the committee the other day, everybody prays. Seven of us. Well, you go, no, we're all going to pray at the same time. Because my prayer might not get to you, through him to you for use. So you need to pray for yourself and for what you need and asking God for. So with that, thank you very much, and I will see you on Sunday, the twenty-first, at eleven o'clock or ten forty-five, but we will serve you something so you won't leave hungry, Mr. Mayor. And anybody who wishes to come, and those are out there on Zoom, we'll welcome you all to come join us that Sunday. Thank you.
I can, would you, come on up? Want to come up to? Come on up, brother. Come on up. This is your house. So this is a special recognition proclamation in honor of working people everywhere. The Building Trades Council is training young people, maybe some not-so-young, to become electricians, become carpenters, painters, plumbers, all services that we need in our community. Not only are they training these folks to do that, they're also providing pensions, they're providing healthcare, and good, steady income. And so we should be acknowledging this because high-speed rail is being built. We have a bunch of other projects coming in. The President of the United States has signed a new bill bringing in millions and millions of dollars into our communities to improve our infrastructure. And so this proclamation is in recognition of the work that these folks do. These are plumbers, electricians, sheet metal workers, and they have a reputation of training people in our community to get good-paying jobs. And we want to recognize them too. So this proclamation is for the building trades. Whereas the U.S. Department of Labor has proclaimed November fifteenth through the November twenty-first of this year as National Apprenticeship Work Week to raise awareness of the vital role that registered apprenticeship provide in creating opportunities and a path to good-paying careers, especially in the building and construction trades. Now, therefore, be resolved that I Santos Garcia, Mayor of the City of Madera, and behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the seventeenth day of November in the City of Madera as Building Trades Apprenticeship Day as part of our National Apprenticeship Week and recognize Fresno, Madera, Kings, and Tulare Counties Building and Construction Trades Council, AFL-CIO, and other partners for their leadership, commitment, and dedication to expanding the apprenticeship model. Signed the seventeenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-one, Mayor Santos Garcia. And I didn't do it justice, but if you want to take a moment and you want to explain what this is about, please do so.
Thank you. I want to thank the City of Madera for this proclamation. My name is Mike Lopez. I'm the Building Trades President for Madera, Kings, and Tulare Counties. This is Vice President Jeff Roberts. And and so we're celebrating an apprenticeship week, National Apprenticeship Week. It's a celebration of pathways into the middle class. In apprenticeship, we don't do background checks. Anybody without any, any any type of construction experience is welcome to apply. We provide that training. After your training, you don't owe anything. You go right to work. You're a journeyman. You can work anywhere in the United States. So I, I, I'm the first generation sheet metal worker. My son's the second. So I encourage this on anybody. I mean, there's no, there's no tuition. No experience needed. Women are encouraged, so please reach out to me, reach out to Jeff. We'll do presentations at your schools, at your churches, wherever. We're here for you guys, and we just want you guys to know that there are other avenues of employment without having to go to college. So thank you very much.
Anyone wanting more information can reach out to us, and we will make it happen so that people can get good-paying jobs. Arnoldo, could you call Mark this thing? My computer went to sleep. Thanks, sir. We will now move on to a workshop, item A one, Retail Sales Tax Update, report by Anthony Forster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me go ahead and share my screen.
Go ahead, sir. Anthony?
Yes, I'm sharing my screen, sir.
Okay.
Okay, can everybody see that screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'll be providing information regarding the update for the city's sales tax receipts for last year. And first thing I want to do is an outline what we're going to do. I'm going to provide an overview of the city's finances, the role of HDL in that process, historical retail taxes, online sales tax, and county pool, the AB one forty-seven, the Wayfair Act, year-over-year by major groups, and then information regarding Measure K. So for an overview, the city operates on a fiscal year budget from July through June. The city contracted with a new sales tax consultant in June of two thousand and twenty with, like I said, HDL. And the sales tax revenue is known months after the end of each quarter. Tonight's slide presentation is a summary of last fiscal year, which was July twenty to June of twenty-one. And the city received tax revenues, recently received tax revenues from the data from the April, May, and June of two thousand and twenty-one. So sales taxes, the city receives one percent of sales tax, also known as the Bradley Burns Tax Act. Revenues may be used at the discretion of the City Council through the General Fund. We have enterprise funds and general funds, but the enterprise funds may not be transferred to the General Fund. So the taxes have to go through the General Fund, so we can spend them and have some discretion on that. The enterprise funds must stay within that fund itself. In the last fiscal year, local governments were projected to experience a decrease of approximately thirty-seven percent due to the stay-at-home orders as a result of the COVID pandemic. Here's the historical sales tax on a retail basis. The actuals for two thousand and twenty fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year were close to one point two million over budget, which was an increase of about twelve and a half, twelve point one percent. And the question is, is why this happened or what happened to cause this? Because of lingering effects of COVID-nineteen, we budgeted for no changes in the sales tax revenue from last year. And our previous consultants have projected about the same numbers that we would see as actuals. But the city showed stronger sales than anticipated, mostly due to online sales. And also the unemployment rate dropped, so more people were spending, which created a positive effect on sales tax revenue. And you can see that the historical perspective from sixteen seventeen all the way to two thousand and twenty-one and the increases. The green represents the budget and the blue represents the actuals. The county pool allocation, we received about six hundred thousand more than last year. And the result was four hundred thousand over, I'm sorry, four hundred thousand increase from eighteen, nineteen, to nineteen twenty, and then a five hundred seventy-five thousand, almost six hundred thousand from nineteen twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, which is about a twenty-eight percent year-over-year increase, and that was due to online sales. Here's the sales tax by major groups, business groups, automobile transportation, autos and transportation was an increase. Everything across the board, we had increases. The greatest increase for being in the pool allocation, as I stated in the previous slide, the online sales was the reason for the dramatic increase at the start of COVID. More people were obviously purchasing online. This is a two-second quarter year-over-year change, local county, the city of this county and the state. The information for the state was provided by HDL and also for the county. And as you can see, some increases for the auto and transportation was a big increase for the city, which was greater than the county's increase, but not quite as large as the state's. Another big increase was the consumer goods, general consumer goods, thirty-seven and a half percent, which was greater than what Madera County experienced, but was less than the state overall. And the overall increase minus the pool allocation was about a seventeen point nine percent increase, which was less than the county and less than the state of California. Now we're on to Measure K. The city gets a half-set sales tax measure that was approved by the voters. The city gets a half-set sales tax measure that was approved by the voters. The city committed to spending the revenue for police and fire only. And separate accounts have been created to segregate the funds between the fire and the police. It's split fifty-fifty each, each fund. Here's the historical numbers for the last four fiscal years. And we budgeted five million and we're probably going to stay budgeting five million because we don't know the effect what COVID is going to have. And it's a conservative estimate, but as you can see, we had six point two million this last fiscal year. That again is split between the police and the fire. Any questions?
Ronaldo, do you have anything to add to this?
The, I thank you very much, Mary. The only thing that I would add is as we were coming up with this year's operating budget, one of the things that we attempted to do was capture the impacts of COVID, which if council recalls, were very challenging across the state of California. The League of California Cities had notified communities to project an approximately thirty-seven sales tax. The City of Madera relies very heavily on sales tax. And so when knowing that number, we still took a very conservative approach. And one thing that we had indicated to council at the time of the budget adoption was that we knew we could sustain for several months as we took a wait-and-see approach to the budget, knowing that we do have some additional revenue or funds in our unassigned general fund account and then on top of that in our emergency reserve account. So we knew we had roughly thirteen point three million dollars in the bank. We were extremely fortunate that the City of Madera experienced an increase of sales tax and not a decrease. Other communities did not, were not as fortunate. A lot of the coastal communities did experience a decrease, but again, the City of Madera experienced an increase and that's reflected on the numbers this evening. In the next couple of months, we're anticipating on bringing back the financial audited report. So again, what we showed this evening was simply sales tax. But, but you will know that we did experience a, an increase of what we had budgeted. We take a look at what we budgeted, we budgeted the same as we had received the previous year again because at the time we weren't sure of the impacts of COVID. But again, we were very fortunate that the City of Madera, we did experience an increase both in sales tax and Measure K. And those funds, only because we received them, that does not allow staff to spend the money. At some point, we would have to come back to council and we would have to ask to spend those dollars. So again, only because we received them, the city manager or city staff, we do not have the luxury of spending those funds. The only thing that city staff is authorized to spend is what the city council approved as part of the budget. So the money's in the bank. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that and applaud you and your staff for making this happen. I know that we've, we've been doing pretty good for the last three years since two thousand eighteen. So could you let us, let us finish up this report, sir, and then if you want, you can make a public comment by coming up to the podium. But at this time, I'm going to let my council members, anyone who want to comment on this. Mister, the council member Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. So I guess this question will go to Mr. Forster here regarding the projected sales tax that you had shown on that slide there for the general sales tax. I did see a projection of an increase, although we're conservative. Obviously with stimulus and what have you and COVID, that certainly played a part in the internet sales and the sales tax portion. How far out can we project with this sales tax? I know certainly there's always been like a three percent increase, but what can we, what can we see here for twenty-one, twenty-two? And I'm sorry, when I, when you saw the, the chart that you were presenting, I wanted to ask you there, but I don't know if you can pull that chart back?
Sure, let me pull the screen back up.
And I don't know, do we have any? Any reason to believe that that could potentially, I mean, they had projected a thirty-seven percent decrease? Is that, do we have any reason to believe that that could come back in a different way now that COVID is kind of dying down a bit? No more stimulus money going out, although there is infrastructure bills going on, obviously creates jobs and stuff, but do we have a reason to believe that this could potentially have a decrease in our, in our projected sales tax?
At this time, we do not. We are in constant communication with our sales tax consultant, which again is HDL. They have not indicated a significant increase. They, they, they've, they've expressed and they're continuing to monitor the situation. We may see a flattening of it, however, with, with the ongoing inflation that the entire country is experiencing right now. I'm not just sure exactly what the impact will be, but at this time, we are not expecting a decrease. However, we do receive updates about every three months from our consultant. The challenge sometimes is, is the information we're getting is several months behind. So for example, the information we provided this evening was for the end of June and we're already in October, I mean, I'm sorry, November. So we're in the middle of November. We just received this information a couple of days ago. And so we're always four, about four months behind. So in the next couple of months, once we get the new information for the, for the last quarter, which was the fall, we'll come back to council and we'll present that. And if there's any adjustments, we'll pitch those out to council during the mid-year budget adjustments.
Yeah, and you know, I guess what brings curiosity to me is that a lot of the hospitality and services along the cities and anywhere in the nation really suffered the most. But yet there was a big increase in internet sales. And again, I'm not sure if that was due specifically. You can correlate that to stimulus, but now that that's died down, what does, what happens then? And again, the effects of some of those services and hospitality services that lost their, their businesses and what kind of effect it'll have moving forward. So I'm curious to see what will take place here in two thousand twenty-two. Hopefully we get a report and we can act accordingly to that. So thank you again for the presentation, Mr. Forster.
Sure.
Any other comments from my colleagues? If not, then I will move on to public comment at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Sorry for the interruption earlier. Okay, there's thirty, I want to answer your question, sir. Thirty-seven percent decrease in coastal communities because of the exodus to the valley. And this sales tax went up because people moved here. They spent money. So same thing caused the housing crisis as well here. So it's not, please, you know, don't give them credit. Give us credit, people who spend money, who welcome them. Who sold their, you know, stuff here. Question?
I was gonna say, thank you for spending money. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, exactly. Thirty-seven percent, you know, they lost over there, so they moved here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment, Alicia, on this item?
Mayor, we have no callers on Zoom and I have no written public comment.
Thank you very much. I will now close, close public comment and we will move on to the consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item be removed from the consent calendar and it will be considered separately. Do we have any items that my council members, my colleagues want to address? If not, I'll look for a motion.
So move to approve as presented.
Motion to approve the consent calendar by Councilmember Gallegos and seconded by Councilmember Villegas. Alicia, would you call the bro?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes is absent. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We will now move on to item D, petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. I believe that Mr. Rodriguez, you have this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Allow me to pull it up. The item before council this evening is cannabis business permits. And this is a consideration of the number of cannabis business permits in the city, the procedures and the guidelines, and then also the review criteria and the fees for filing for a cannabis permit. For the benefit of the council and the community, this item was initially brought before council. It's a discussion item earlier this summer. Staff subsequently brought that item back to council on September the first after a rather lengthy discussion. Council provided staff direction and since September the first, council was taking, has formally adopted two ordinances. Those ordinance items have been included in, in the resolutions in your packet and I'll go over them in, as part of the presentation. So again, so the first item before council, there are three resolutions in your packet. Attachment number one is part of your packet establishes the number and types of cannabis permits that may be issued in the city. And that was again at council direction. Item number two, so resolution number two, are the fees for the business permits. And number three is, is, is a rather, I'll say lengthy part of the staff report and it includes attachments three, A, B, and C, and I'll go through those as part of my presentation. So in a nutshell, staff is recommending that cannabis licenses be, be, be separated into three license types. The first one, standard applications or, or, or microbusiness. Then the second one would be social equity. And then the third one would be vertically integrated cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, and test, test labs. For purposes of this presentation, I'll just collectively refer to that as vertical because the rest is a mouthful. So council may recall that we discussed social equity applications at length at two previous meetings. But again, one, one of the principal goals of social equity applications is to recognize and address the long-term impacts that federal and state law enforcement policies potentially may have had on low-income persons within our community. And one of the things that we're attempting to do as part of this is to provide them an opportunity that they probably would not have if, if we didn't carve them out into a special category. The principal reason for that is because it's very challenging to, to, to obtain a job or to get a license type if you have a history, if you have a criminal history of, of being arrested for cannabis. So again, this provides, this, this equals the playing field for a lot of people that may potentially would not be able to apply. So the next couple of slides is a breakdown of a table that's provided as part of your staff report. So on the top row is our standard application, social equity and vertical integration. And again, the subsequent tables are going to look exactly like this. So the competitive process, so for standard application, it would be competitive and as well as social equity for vertically integrated, it's not a competitive process. At the end of the day, the only person a person would be competing with for vertically integrated is themselves. There's, it's not a competitive process. So if one applicant gets a permit, that does not take away from potentially another applicant. The maximum number of permits that may be issued by council, standard applications two, social equities, I'm sorry, six and two, again vertically integrated is unlimited. I should add that council at any time always has the luxury or the discretion to modify those numbers. The only thing council would have to do is request it. It would have to be agendized and potentially we would have to come back to council. So again, the only, the, the, the only group that can modify that would be council staff does not have that option. There would be an informational kickoff meeting for all three categories. There is a criminal background check for all three. As well, there's a zoning verification letter required prior to phase one for all three. There would be a completeness review for all three. And then the scoring would be a little bit different for the three of them. And so you can tell that the scoring for social equity, for social equity would be a little bit different in terms that, that again, can the goal is here is to potentially permit people that would not have the luxury or, or could probably not be as competitive for various reasons. And so in terms of who advances to the next phase, so again, so the maximum number of points per application for, for standard is three thousand, social equity is twenty-seven hundred, vertically integrated is three thousand. However, the minimum number of points needed to advance to phase three is a little bit different. For standard applications, it's ninety percent or twenty-seven hundred points, social equity the same. For vertically integrated, it's eighty percent or twenty-four. However, the, the, the maximum number of points permitted is the same you'll tell by standard applications. And that's why I'd indicated that for vertically integrated applications, you're only competing against yourself. And then in terms of, of a community meeting, a community meeting would be required for all three. In terms of the, the minimum number of applications that will advance to phase four, right now we have standard applications is ten, social equity is ten, for vertically integrated, that, that section would not be applicable. There would be a city council interview process for both standard and social equity, but not for vertically integrated. And the decision-making body for standard would be city council. Same for social equity, however, for vertically integrated, it would be city staff. Identify that in red to simply highlight that that was the most recent change at the last council meeting per council direction. And then in terms of complying with Exhibit B, which is attached as part of your packet, the, the only applicants that would have to comply with the social equity piece again would be those that are applying under the social equity section and not under standard application or the vertically integrated. The processing fees per application would be ten thousand five hundred and fifty-one and some change. Of that HDL would receive fifty-nine hundred. That fifty-nine hundred is a flat fee per application and that's to assist the city in reviewing the applications. On average, these applications will be approximately two hundred pages. They're very dense and they take a long time and, and the one of the things that, that staff is going to need some assistance on is, is having some subject matter assistance. Again, they're very dense documents, they're technical in nature. And in order to help expedite the process, HDL would be assisting the city. The city fee would be four thousand ninety-one dollars. Some of these fees would be for fees moving forward, however, it's also to recover some of the expenses that the cities incurred today. For example, approximately a year ago, the city spent approximately a hundred thousand dollars to put this on the ballot. We also have some staff time, the city attorney staff time. And so some of this is to recover some of the funds that we spent. The zoning verification letter is a hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The background check is three hundred dollars. That would go directly to HDL, not to the city. And then also there's a fingerprint, a life scan, which is seventy-three dollars for a total of ten thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. So with that being said, council this evening, staff is recommending that the council adopt the three resolutions. And again, that resolution number one establishes the maximum number of applications that may be granted by council from six and two, and then it's unlimited for socially, I mean, for vertically integrated, establishing the fees at ten thousand plus and then also establishing the procedure guidelines and review criteria for the other three. That concludes my presentation, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I just have one question. The fee for the, what was that? Background check, is that three hundred in addition to the fifty-nine hundred?
That would be in addition to mayor and that fee would be paid directly to HDL on a website that they have established. So that, that fee would not come to the city. So the ten thousand five hundred and fifty-one, that would not be a check that's written to the city, however, that's the total amount because at different times, these fees would be due. For example, the zoning verification would probably be one of the initial steps and an applicant would pay the one eighty-seven, that would be to the city. The three hundred, they would be paying directly to HDL and the life scan would be paid as part of the process. If I recall, that's the seventy-three dollars. And at that point, the applicants would pay the HDL fee and the city fee directly to the city. And then the city will in turn cut a check to HDL as part of that process.
Thank you very much for that. I just have one concern and this is directed to my colleagues. Councilmember Montes is part of this process and he has been for the longest time. He's very passionate about this. Does anyone else feel that we should hold this item until he comes back to be able to vote on this item? Or do you want to move forward? That's basically what I'm, what I'm asking of you. Because I want to respect. You, you, you want to move forward?
I think at this point, it's brought, it's came this far, so I think.
Okay, I get it. I get it. I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure. Okay, do we have any comments from my, my colleagues on this item? Do we have any public comment, Alicia?
Mayor, I, I have no written public comment, Mayor.
And there's no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question. City is charging fee and HDL is charging fee. What kind of service HDL is providing? City spent hundred thousand dollars turning, you know, hours and all those hours. But what is HDL doing here? She is charging a lot more than the city fees. So that's my question.
Would you like to answer that, Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you very much, Mayor. That's an excellent question. And so one of the items, when city staff was, was attempting to, to, to come up with a figure.
Of of what it would take to process an application fee. The flat fee from HDL is fifty nine hundred dollars. There will be some applications that take longer. Then 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 the. Being the allocated time, there's some applications that will take less time. However, again, these are over two hundred page applications plus attachments. They're technical in nature. That 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 would be HDL's fee. The city staff fee, some of it again is to recover. However, as part of the next step. I'm going to speculate that HDL will probably spend more time reviewing the applications in comparison to city staff. And again, some of that is because of subject expertise. Some city staff will be allocated to the process. Your city attorney will be involved, the finance department, planning, the police department. So we do have hours built in for city staff. However, again, the fee of HDL. David can most definitely speak to the fees of HDL, however, from looking at other communities. And again, I'm not a subject matter expert, but but I have a fairly good idea of what other communities charge. Our fees of ten thousand five hundred and fifty one appear reasonable. That's not to say they're low or they're high. Or they're not low, yeah, ten thousand five hundred dollars is a lot of money. I acknowledge that. However, versus the process, I mean, in in comparison to what other cities charge, it appears to be reasonable. And David, you're on the call if you wouldn't mind speaking to that because. You work with a lot more cities.
Yeah, so mayor, if I may, so if the the fee that we're charging is not only reflective of doing the application. It's reflective. Of us, you know, we we anticipate historically about a hundred and fifty Q and A question. That are going to have to be answered by by the inquiries from the applicants. Which we just overwhelmed staff one. Of the questions asked and then being able to answer to them and respond to them. That also includes us attending the public meeting. And anticipating three or four potential council meetings for each one of the interviews that are going to be conducted. For the social equity and for the standard applications. And so it encompasses all that plus any potential travel time. So all that's incorporated in there. So it's not just the application itself that will be a significant amount of hours.
Thank you, David. Any more of public comments? I'll take them in order, I believe.
Very much honorable mayor and council members. My name is Rico Saldivar and I'm here representing the potential future cannabis business mainstream medicinal club. And I would just like to speak in regards to the number of permits and licenses. I know right now you guys have it six and two. And I just would like to ask council. Just to reconsider evening the number out, have more faith in us business owners here. The locals, you know, we're smart people, we're good business people. And we, I think we've proven what we're about. We really want to give back to this community. And we would like nothing more than to see the, you know, city of Madera just really be revitalized with what's to come and be a big part of that. We appreciate the opportunity even just to be able to apply, but we do request and ask if that number is on an even ground with four and four. Or just meet us somewhere a little bit more than the six and two. I think that there's some great leaders and business people here that are going to represent the city well. Me and my partners being some of those. And I would just like for you guys to have faith in in us. There are big companies, we understand that. They're already established, they're coming in, we understand that. And it's nothing against them, it's just that. You know, we we have a pretty, pretty strong run in this race as well. And we want to be able to prove to you guys that we're more than capable of conducting a strong business here in the city of Madera. And we would like to see others get opportunities as well.
Thank you, thank you.
It's good to see you, Rico. We've seen you on Zoom the last few times. It's nice to see a face. Thank you for coming today.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much again.
Why hundred and fifty questions? You know, who would like to do business in the city, really? Think about it, you know, stand in businessman's shoes. You're a businessman, I think, I mean, I don't think anybody represents businesses here. Please, you know, stand in businessman's shoe, hundred fifty questions for what? And these fees to HDL for doing what? Reviewing paperwork, you know, it's like clear paper pushers, red tape. What is it really? I mean, I don't understand that really. And oh, yeah, one more thing. I hope you remember that curve couple of years ago. Water rates went up by thirty nine percent. I came here, I questioned. You will not believe that what happened. City council did water rate study. And spent eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars on that. So it's six graders arithmetic. Your director finance couldn't do it. So I was I've stopped questioning. I hope, you know, you don't raise, increase those questions to three hundred instead of hundred fifty because I spoke up here. Sorry.
Thank you. Is there any other further public comment?
Hi, good afternoon, council mayor. Thank you for taking the time. My name is George Deleja. I am a proud Maderan and also local business owner here in the Central Valley. I'm also representing mainstream, a prospect cannabis location here in Madera. My main concern, of course, is going to be the the fact that. We would like to see more representation from minorities, from those of people of color. People that have gone through a lot of these situations here in the local area. And to please, please consider at least going down the middle fifty fifty. I know we've got two. And it's it would mean a lot to be able to. Increase that and give those opportunities to those that have been affected the most with these situations nearby. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council mayor. I first want to start off by introducing myself. My name is Roman Gonzalez. I'm a local business owner here in the city of Madera. I am here by myself to talk about the interest for this cannabis moving into the downtown area. I would imagine that there's going to be a lot of dispensaries located in downtown area. That's going to bring a lot of money to the downtown area. And for us as business owners, also, we're going to be able to. See that come through our businesses ourselves and be able to give jobs to the local Maderans. And continue to do that, continue to grow our businesses. And we are also going to be looking at. Possibly doing any type of in town training for the Maderans to show them our field. My field is technology, I'm in the IT field. So we are looking forward to this to. Grow the downtown area to revitalize it. We're very excited about that. We have the Christmas parade coming down. Soon, and that's a big event that we have here in the city of Madera. I I know that there's different districts here, but I I mean, for us to come together as a community. Work as a team to get this passed right away. I'm excited. I got really, really excited. When I heard that we're going to move forward with this and make things happen today. So my interest is for the local community here to thrive from you guys' decisions that we are going to hopefully. Make this happen very quickly. Bring, let's bring these businesses downtown. And and I I know that there's a lot of security measures that they're going to be passed to make sure that everything's going to be protected. Down south in South Valley, North Valley, they've already opened up these dispensaries. And I believe Fresno too, they're getting ready to open theirs very soon. So, uh, you know, if we are able to keep. The Maderans here in the Central Valley or Madera area actually, instead of traveling and spending their tax dollars in other cities. Like this gentleman was mentioning, we want to be able to continue spending that tax dollars here. Let's get those sales tax dollars here and let's keep them here. So I would. Ask the council if we could just move forward and continue pushing along this cannabis business and give them permits out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege to echo the sentiments of the the last couple of speakers. I too have been consistent in in speaking out about the equity piece of this of this puzzle. I believe that we don't have enough equity applicants if we limit it to two. I think that we're going to open up big business in cannabis for big companies to come in from Canada, Los Angeles, the Bay Area. And we should be giving more opportunities to local Maderans because in the ordinance, it says local Maderans. And so I I would ask the council to increase fit, increase the equity from two to four. I also am concerned with corruption. This has been a long time issue in the city of Madera. There's always been some type shape or form of corruption in Madera. And by allowing vertical integration to not be checked. And for us not to disclose that we're in the business of vertical integration, I think is wrong and it it leads to that. And so those two pieces, I would be very concerned if they move forward. That's just my personal opinion. I'm not targeting anyone at any way, shape or form, but tho- those are my two main concerns. When I ran for city council in two thousand eighteen, I ran against corruption. And I believe that corruption is a possibility if we just open it up to anybody and we do not have to disclose who our relationships are. With that, I'll stop there. I'll take any other comments from my colleagues or looking for a.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Gallegos.
May I just, I just wanted to make a small short comment.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Your city manager made a very detailed report concerning the 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 three resolutions that before you. With respect to the one concerning the the procedures and the criteria. There's a lot of detail in the attachments and if if one opens the actual, the applications. There's lots and lots of forms and I just wanted to underscore that that the there even with the. Business and the standard retail and the vertical, there are sections of the review process. That relate one to labor equity, diversity and inclusion. Which is four hundred points and also community benefits and investment plan in the community, which is five hundred points. So the social equity is not just part of the social equity applications. But it's also part of the other applications they they. And that was something that was part of this whole process from the beginning. And then as far as I'm not sure what you were alluding to as far as the the criminal aspects, I think everybody's would be concerned about that. But the the way in which the applications and the review process and the the criteria has been set up. And the ordinance itself and the regulations, there is significant review concerning. Anybody that's going to be associated with the applications and their ownership interest and and their sub. Subownership interest, et cetera. So there's lots of detail that that your staff and your consultant HDL. Built into the process.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I think councilman. Go ahead. Okay, I'd like to thank those community members out there for your comments and I take them to heart. I do believe that this is a resolution that we can go back and always change. And after we get moving, but like you said, we need to get this moving and it's come to us several times. And we've discussed it for several months. So with that. I am encouraging my colleagues to go ahead with what we have presented in front of us. And that we could always bring it back. It's like a living document. We can always come back and tweak and change whatever we need to do. As policymakers here. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez, yes, thank you, mayor. I too want to thank everyone in the audience and all the comments that have come across for this specific item. I think when we first initiated the cannabis, there was always, always an intent to help this community. In diversity, equity, jobs. And I just want to point out, thank you. Hilda for pointing out what this ordinance, especially the complexity of this ordinance and how much work it took for us to bring this together. So that we can have businesses such as yourselves to be able to partake in an equal manner. I think originally we started off by trying to put a hybrid model out there with a lottery process. But we heard you loud and clear that that wasn't really something that was inclusive for businesses. So we made some arrangements there. To try to, or we came to a conclusion that the best course of action was to. Take on this next venture of our ordinances to allow for a a set amount of licenses, whether they be retail. And social equity, but I I do want to make a point that the social equity and again. To what Hilda's point was, it's not only in the license, but it's the amount of revenues that we can capture to help. The underfunded. Programs or projects that we have that again go through that same question, which is equity. Right? I mean, in order to get things done in our community, you need dollars. And I I I want to appreciate gentleman in the back said it best, you know, they spend a lot of money here. Those sales tax can be. Regenerate back into our community, help those and and give equity back into our community. So it's not, it's not about a number of licenses. It's about the impacts that it has overall in the industry. And I think we win win by one, getting this thing in order. Two, getting businesses such as yourselves in 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 line. And three, having the the employment factor. Once you get the employment factor that regenerates, it's another, you know, you stimulate more growth for other folks to to continue to. You know, if you have a a person working at a at a shop making, who knows, eighteen or twenty dollars, that that person then generates another job for someone. It has a a multiplier effect. And I think if we understand that, then I think we'll see that Madera has has a it's a capacity to win big here. And kind of to councilwoman's point is allow, trust your city council to move forward with what we have. We can reevaluate and assess what really took place was to with those two equity, social equity licenses. Did they really come about to be what we expected them to be? Were they actually successful or did they fail? Where did we fail? But for us to say, let's go ahead and have eight and eight, then it might, we may be doing a disservice for that. I think it's best that you allow this council to move forward with what we have now. Let's reassess this. Back in a year, we'll come back and we'll see where we're at with the revenues. We'll come back and see where we're at with the social equity piece. And by that time, I think this council can make a decision and say, you know what? We need to add more social equity for sure. And but at this time, I think we've come too far not to move forward. And there's a lot of work, a lot of people that really put a lot of time into this. Mayor, myself, I think, signed on a a a the the measure and and you know, there was a lot of people here in our community that want to see this move forward. And that was evident by the by the voters. So I'd like to see this move forward. I think we owe it to the community. And 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 I think it's best that we we move this forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to to approve the item.
Get the councilwoman Evans to join me and then we'll come back to you. Absolutely. Councilwoman Evans.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that is here tonight. It's really good to see your faces. I'm not good with all the names. I remember Rico and Utech, correct? What's your first name again, both of you? George and Roman. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. As far as. The social equity, I do understand. But I must concur, let's move forward, you guys. We may not come back in a year, we may come back in six months. You know, who's to say? But right now, we're here and we're just waiting for the thumbs up and to press forward. We need the money here in Madera. As you said, the Christmas parade is coming. You know, that's, that's a big thing. I heard about this today and what we need to do. But I am so excited for this to happen here. I'm excited for each and every one of you that are putting in for licensing. I pray to each one that puts in for it, that is a Maderian. Will receive your licensing. And let's move forward. Let's get this going and let's get the money back in our city. And maybe we can get Yosemite beautified because it needs some work, you know, and and even the other businesses. But let's move forward and. Let's do this all together. Let's come together as a city and show as it says, Madera love. Let's do that. Let's have the love for each other and let's have the love for our city and let's get going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, I will. Again, I'd make that motion to approve item D one.
Second.
Motion to approve item D one by councilmember Rodriguez, second by councilmember Gallegos. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Montes is absent. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Villegas?
Uh, no.
Mayor Garcia?
No.
Motion passes with. The motion has failed. The resolution requires four votes. Even though you have a quorum, you still require four votes for resolutions and ordinances under state law.
Okay. All right, so then we'll bring this back probably when Mr. Montes is available. We can bring it back. Is it truly?
Is it truly, would it truly cause a major setback in adjusting the uh the number of permits? Like from six to two to four to four or, you know, or even five to three? Does that number really? Uh, does it really throw everything off to where it just prolongs this process?
Well, I think, I think what we'll do is because the motion failed, um, we can request that this be brought back for our next meeting. And then we can have a discussion. We can have further public comment, etc., etc. So.
Just because.
At this point, the vote has been taken. Um, the motion failed. And so I'm I'm assuming that someone's going to ask for it to be brought back before the public.
Right, you would, you would need to bring it back at the next meeting if you went to wish to proceed. Or somebody who voted no could uh make a motion to reconsider.
I move to bring it back as presented.
No, well, somebody, somebody who voted no would have to vote to reconsider it tonight. Uh, otherwise, at the end of the meeting, when we talk about bringing back items on the agenda. Uh, anybody else can bring it back for next week. But sometimes councils. Uh, do consider the the dynamics and and somebody does decide to go ahead and go with the apparent majority. And uh make a motion to reconsider. And I just wanted to point that you have that ability to do that. And that would be for uh Mr. Viegas and the mayor uh to have that that option. If they do not exercise that option, then one of the council members who voted yes would uh request that the item be brought back uh at the next meeting.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And um I know that there was some really strong efforts uh from some of us here, especially in your position. Um, and I want to thank those that uh certainly uh made their comments in regards to favoring it. I appreciate also your comment, uh Mayor, for going against it. Obviously, you have your strong concerns about that, which I appreciate. But I will ask a a council member of Viegas also if he'd like to comment on that and maybe possibly reconsider. Uh, if if uh uh we can make this happen tonight, I think it'd be a benefit for the for the community. So I know that all of us pretty much had a really strong position as far as why. I understand why you don't want to do it, Mayor. But uh, Mr. Viegas, can can I hear your comments as well?
Oh, I want to bring it back to the next. To when we have all the votes. So I don't, I don't want to reconsider it right now.
Okay. That's a um fair, so I I'm assuming that you'd like to see uh the full council make that decision. Is that what I'm getting? Because if that's the case, then I guess I would uh suggest that we bring this back as soon as possible. I think we've beat this quite a bit. I think it's time that we put this to rest, give the community what they want. I mean, they want to see this move forward. I I don't. It's it's just very frustrating sitting up here and watching this continue to delay more and more. I don't know. I mean, I I can't speculate what it is, but I mean, obviously, it seems like we put a lot of drain on staff, on ourselves. And more importantly, the community that have put us up here to make decisions and they're hard decisions sometimes. But nevertheless, I think we should move this forward. It's it's, you can't beat it anymore. It's just going to delay the process to delay the applications that these gentlemen have spoken about. I mean, that's just crazy. I I don't get it.
Rodriguez.
Those are my comments. Yeah, I just want to make those comments.
Thank you very much.
And again, I wanted.
We've had a vote and.
I understand, but now I'm making the motion to bring this back at our earliest uh uh meeting that we can bring this back.
I believe that will be under uh reports.
Can we do it here? Since the motion failed?
Technically, you can. Uh, generally, you you it's at the end of the ag- agenda when there's new items, but when it's about the specific item. There is, it it is legally permissible to do that now.
I did hear Councilman Vanegas say he was a no vote and he said to bring it back. And you, Hilda, was very clear in saying that that can't happen that way.
So we'll bring it back at our next meeting. Alright, now let's move on to item D two, resolutions to the Civil Service Commission. Composition and appointment process. I believe uh Wendy Silva, you have this item?
Yes, sir. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Alright, so uh this is an item staff is bringing back following direction we received um last month in October. Um, so we do have a civil service commission. Very briefly, they review and certify eligibility lists. And they conduct hearings related to the city civil service system and personnel roles. The municipal code provides that it's a five-member body appointed at large by the city council as a whole. It came to staff's attention that our municipal code was in conflict with the government code. Which provides that the appointments need to be made by the elected mayor, subject to approval of the city council. So um initially, this item was introduced in October, as I mentioned, uh to seek direction from the council. Based on that, uh direction and ordinance has been drafted. That modifies the composition to a seven-member body to match that of the city council. The process provides that individual city council members would submit nominations to the elected mayor for consideration. The mayor would then submit appointees for consideration to the city council. And the appointments would be approved by resolution adopted by at least four votes of the city council. Also, the requested action this evening is if the ordinance has drafted meets council's expectations to introduce the ordinance. Um, if council would like to see changes, then staff would just request feedback. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Wendy. And this is in uh intended to be with compliance with the state of California. Is that correct?
Well, it serves actually two purposes, Mayor. One is that your ordinance is outdated. Uh, and uh it it was, it's a a holdout from the, from when you used to have five uh members on the council. And you had five members on that commission. So one, one part of it was to increase it to seven. And then the other part was to follow the process that's set forth in state law. You're correct.
Thank you. Um, any comments from my colleagues? Any public comment, Alicia? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councils. You know me since you appointed me. Uh, today, or not today, but when I first read this resolution. I didn't like it much. You know, I had been. Nominated, appointed by three different council members, one former mayor and two city councils, so three of you. And at that time, I did consider that that was the best thing to do. Because even though the mayor is appointed at large, the mayor is also part-time. The mayor doesn't have all the time to get a team, to get a team of representatives, uh. Board members or commissioners. I noticed that in the past, there had been quite a few vacancies. Because one city council was not able to to select. A person to fill out that vacancy. Now they are giving all the authority to one mayor. Nothing against you, Mr. Santos. I I trust you. I voted for you. It's not against you.
Thank you very much.
It's about the mayor in general. Next time, who know who who the mayor is going to be? We're going to make sure that we share the uh the the power, the power or not. Don't concentrate the power in one single person. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your service on the commission, too. Um, any other comments? Any other comments, Alicia?
Mayor, I have no written public comment and we have um no callers on Zoom.
Alrighty, then I will ask for a motion from my colleagues.
Move to approve item D two?
Second.
Yes, uh, motion to approve item D two by Councilmember Rodriguez, second by Councilmember Evans. Alicia, would you call the role?
Councilmember Gallegos?
No.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Montes is absent. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with four yes votes and one no vote by Councilmember Gallegos.
Thank you very much. Um, there are no administrative reports. Uh, we will now move on to council member reports and announcements for future.
Uh, Mayor, we have D three.
Oops, did I skip that? I guess I want to get out of here. Uh, item D three, authorized terms and conditions for employment agreements. Of underrepresented department head positions. I believe, Mr. Rodriguez, you have this item.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Members of the council, the item before you this evening are um simply stated are contracts for department heads. So um a brief summary, this item before council this evening is for the following positions. Again, these would be uh the city's positions. These positions currently serve at the will of the city manager. And these are unrepresented positions. So currently, the city Madera has four labor groups. Uh, that would be the Police Officers Association, Mid Management and Police Officers Association, commonly referred to as LIM. We have General Bargaining Unit. Um, and then we also have um the mid managers. Um, uh, the department heads do not have a labor group. So again, this, more specifically, this applies to the police chief, the director of Parks and Community Services, which is currently vacant, the city engineer. The Human Resource Director, the IT Manager, the Chief Building Official, the Planning Manager. The Director of Financial Services, the Public Works Director, and the Director of Community Development. So currently, again, every one of these positions serves at the will of um. Of the city manager and each one of them has an individual contract that clearly defines their compensation and the benefits that they receive as city employees. This evening, staff is proposing that that the council adopt a standardized document. That would spell out those benefits. Um, the the documents themselves would all be identical. With the exception of the police chief, which is slightly different, just because of the role that they do play in the organization. If approved, this document will be posted on the city's website for the community to review. So the proposed changes this evening on the contracts would be a two percent cost of living adjustment, commonly referred to as a COLA, which would occur. Every year between um um starting this year and then um July twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. A one-time payment in each year, beginning this year, and then for the subsequent three years, a holiday um holiday closure benefit. So between Christmas and New Year's, um, these changes, every one of these items is is um. Is is similar to um those terms negotiated with the four labor groups that the council approved earlier this year. The reason I say similar, not identical, is because every uh labor group received the same benefit with the exception of. The Police Officers Association and LIM, which wh- which which we did um. That did not receive the holiday closure. It's a little more challenging because the the police department operates twenty-four seven and there's always people on call. Besides that, every labor group in the city received a two percent COLA and then also a fifteen hundred dollar um lump sum payment. The fifteen hundred lump sum payment would be coming out of the city's unassigned general fund. That, those are not the dollars that were discussed this evening, rather the the they are um. I have to say, they're extra dollars from hi- historic practices, but there were dollars that were undersigned in previous years. So currently, there are six individuals that serve in these positions. The cost for the first year COLA is six thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars. And that is for the collective group, not for individuals. The cost for the lump sum payment is nine hun- is nine thousand dollars. Again, fifteen hundred dollars times six is nine thousand dollars. And the impact of the holiday closure is fourteen thousand nine hundred and twelve. So this evening, uh, there is a resolution in your packet, which would approve the terms and conditions for employment. For the unrepresented department heads, which again, there's currently six. However, there are more positions, but they're currently vacant. It would authorize the city manager to enter into individual at-will employment agreements with the parameters that were described above. And it would also authorize the finance director to allocate the funds, like I talked about a few minutes ago, for the one-time payments of the fifteen hundred dollars. That's identical to what was done for the four labor groups. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation, Mayor and Council. And I will stop sharing my screen.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Armando, for the presentation. Um, I am certainly a believer that uh, you know, those COLAs. Um, are warranted along with the lump sum, but I always have reservations when it's an ongoing four-year term. And um, no, I always feel that the the council should check its financial position before it starts assessing any compensation. Um, to any group uh bargaining unit or individual. So for that matter, to stay consistent with my previous decision, I I'm not in a agreement with the four-year. Certainly, um, I I believe that the 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 COLAs are warranted and the lump sums as well, but I think those should be done individually every year. When this council can assess its its financial position. So with that, I am not going to uh side with this uh uh item. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gallegos.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to thank our directors for um working so hard, especially through COVID. And um knowing that our staff was one week off, one week on, to make sure that we could sustain the city. If something was to happen um to any of our employees. And you guys were there every week. Um, working hard to make sure that the city was running like a well-oiled machine. So thank you for that. You've also worked tirelessly on um all these holiday closures. When the rest of your employees that help run the city, that you need to go to, to have things happen, aren't there because they do have that holiday off. So um with that, I thank you for hanging in there with us on those holiday closures when the rest of our staff is off. And um you've been working. So with that, I will um be motioning for D T, D three to be approved as presented.
I second the motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Gallegos and second by Councilwoman Evans to um approve the item. Alicia, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Gallegos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Uh, no, but uh it will there be chance for a public comment? I'm not sure if we opened it up.
Do we have any public comment, Alicia?
We do not, Mayor. I have no um written public comment.
And there's no one on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, sir?
That's a no.
Councilmember Montes is absent. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with four yes votes, one no vote by Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilmember Montes being absent.
Thank you very much for that. Um, now we will move on to item F. There are no administrative reports under item E. Councilmember Reports, Announcements and Future Agenda Items.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. Just want to do everybody a heads up. I am a par- a member of the Madera EV Lions. That will be doing the Christmas Tree Parade downtown on December second. Applications are um, you can pick one up at the chamber and fill it out if you want to be part of that event. We are still accepting them and are looking forward to that. Also, on December fourth is the Sunrise Rotary Che- Trees for Charity Event. Uh, I think tickets might have closed today, but if you really want to go, I'm sure you still can get your tickets for that event. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Um, I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Councilwoman Evans?
Yes, I want to say thank you to everyone that came out for the Veterans Day and to the veterans, thank you for your service. To be able to go to sleep at night and to wake up in the morning. And to be able to just see the heavens and just be able to thank God for what we do have. Men and women put their lives on the line for us each and every day. And when you see someone wearing the hat. Thank them for their service. The the presentation, the celebration was fantastic. And I just want to say again, say thank you. Um, I'm looking forward to the parade. So I got my application today, so I'm looking forward to that as well, so.
Bundle up, bundle up.
Chief, if if you're doing the little car, I'm ready. Cece, I got you ahead of time.
I'm running it, so.
Oh, will you run it? That's okay, that's okay. But anyway, listen, thank you guys so very much and. Crunch with the Councilwoman will be coming off again next month. And for everyone, happy Thanksgiving. Because we won't see you, oh, before Thanksgiving. So to your families and your friends, you know, come together. Break bread and fellowship with each other. And from Councilwoman Evans, happy Thanksgiving.
Uh, Councilmember Viegas?
Uh, yes, I just want to say the, yeah, I always attend to the Veterans Day and. I have uh three nephews, they served to in the army and one in the Marines. Uh, and also, you know, looking at these veterans. and and think about the freedom, and the freedom is not free, so it costs life, so that was a great and and great day and appreciation to them, so. And also, I wanted to thank, say thank you for everything, and wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. So yes, we did fill out the application for the Christmas parade today. So we will be attending, it's always a great day, and we're bringing that back. As I mentioned earlier, our the family Garcia's are fully vaccinated, I'm thankful for that. My grandbabies are vaccinated, so I'm I'm really, really happy with that, including the flu shot. And also, if anyone's interested, the city of Madera has partnered with Habitat for Humanity, and we will be having a celebration and giving the keys to some families who are going to be receiving keys to their brand-new home. And that's on Friday, so we're very, very happy for that and thankful for our partnership, Arnaldo, with Habitat. Thank you very much for making sure that happens, and we continue to partner with them. So with that, Hilda, would you lead us into the closed session, please?
Thank you, Mayor, I will do that. You have closed session. An item G of your agenda. One, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation under Government Code 54956.9D2, workers' compensation item concerning Manuel Macias, one claim. Two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation under Government Code 54956.9D2 also, and that's potential litigation resulting from eviction proceedings by city against Jeffrey Streeter. And third, conference with labor negotiators under Government Code 54957.6, agency-designated representatives, Arnoldo Rodriguez, Wendy Silva, and Anthony Forestier, and employee group Madera POA.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you very much for attending. Thank you very much for being with us at the city council meeting, and we will now move into closed session, so I wish you all a good night.
We will now re-adjourn. Helga, could you bring us back?
Thank you. All items on the closed session agenda were considered by the city council and there is no reportable action.
Thank you very much. I now call adjournment to our meeting. Our next regular meeting for the city council will be December 21st, 2021.
December 21st?
December 1st.
December 1st. I'm sorry. I am sorry. Okay. Well, thank you very much for attending and we will see you soon.
Good night.
Good night.